Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to Meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, February 15th, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Gruhl, Han, Labanj, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Rigoza, Weiss, Sein, Padilla, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, let me call upon Council Member Ludlow, both for a presentation and our salute to the flag. Would you all please rise?
If I could ask everyone to please face the flag, place your hand over the heart, and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral order.
Okay. Okay. As Mr. Ludlow prepares for his presentation, Madam Clerk, can we dispense with consent items? For sort of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Ms. Gruhl seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Hogg moves, and Ms. Sein seconds.
Mr. President, there is a moment of inspiration this morning also that has been agendized.
Let's dispense with consent items and be right back to that.
Okay, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on non-agenda items. A general public comment for today's meeting is closed. Next item.
Items noticed for public hearing. Items one and two are ordinances relative to two business improvement districts and they would be levying the special assessments.
Okay. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on items one or two. Public hearings are open and closed. Members of the council wishing to call either of these special, items one and two. Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, those are ordinances and carry over for second readings. If we have 12 members, we'll reconsider them today. Ms. Perry?
Sorry, I wanted to just ask for item one to move forth with, but they're carried over for a second reading, so.
Well, we only have 10 members present at this time. If we have 12 members, we'll reconsider.
Reconsider, could I just say forthwith on two and one for Ms. Perry if they have a show?
Sure. Next items, please.
Item number three is also a public hearing item and it is to appeal objections regarding building and safety report and confirmation of assessment in Council District Four.
And again, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. Public hearing is open and closed. Request to call this item special, item number three. Seeing.
Item number three, I want to continue it today.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there any objection? Seeing none, item three is continued. Next item, please.
Next item is item number four and that's also a public hearing item.
And we do have a speaker card. Item four, let's call that special.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items five through nineteen.
Okay, Mr. Reyes. Nineteen? Okay, let's first acknowledge that five through nineteen have had public hearings in committee. A motion from the floor will be required to reopen the public hearings. Mr. Reyes calls item nineteen special. Other specials, Ms. Gruhl?
Nineteen.
Any other specials on items five through nineteen? Seeing none on the balance of the items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Items five and six are ordinances and also carry over for a second reading. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items twenty through thirty-four. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, items twenty through thirty-four before the City Council today. Members, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Request for specials, Mr. Reyes.
Item thirty-two, please.
Thirty-two, called special by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Forthwith on item twenty, please. And I believe thirty-five and thirty-six are closed session matters. Madam Clerk, does that bring us back to items called special?
Yes, that would. And the first item called special was item number four and that was called special for a card from the public.
Okay, before taking up items called special, let's come back to our presentation segment of today's meeting. Let me recognize Council Member Labanj to be accompanied by Council Member Ludlow for a special presentation.
Mr. President, members, I'm joined by colleague Mr. Ludlow and Ms. Han here as we welcome a very special delegation of Estreivitsja from our great friends from the culture of the Federation of Russia. They're here to announce a very special program later on this year and I would like to ask my colleague, Ms. Han, if you would, and Mr. Ludlow, to join me in the special welcome of the Minister of Culture, Alexander Sokolov, who is here with us right now, who's a beautiful man, whose ears are still ringing because we went to the top of the grand city hall of Los Angeles and we looked out at that beautiful Disney hall up the street and rang the bell. We saw in the beautiful view of San Pedro as we look at the Alameda corridor and a train was coming up on time past 54th Street. But today, we are here today to officially welcome this delegation, which will have a series of programs at the Walt Disney Concert Hall in June. This competition for Rachmaninoff International Piano Competition and Festival will be held at the Red Cat Theater and we know how special that is. There's a $30,000 grand prize for the two, for the one who wins that competition and I'm just pleased to be here to kind of usher this along. I only wish Mr. Garcetti was here with his piano because I think we could enter you and you could help us with the city budget because you know how to play those 88s there, Eric, and my colleague, Mr. Garcetti from Hollywood as well. But if I could ask Mr. Ludlow to say a few words and then Ms. Han as we welcome this special delegation by the Minister of Culture from the Russian Federation.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmen. First of all, let me say that this is going to be an exciting opportunity for the city of Los Angeles. Years ago, this idea of bringing together the best piano virtuosos in the world has now blossomed into one of the most amazing piano contests on the planet. As a young person that grew up in Oberlin, Ohio, at Oberlin College, the Conservatory of Music, when I first sat down with the organizers of this effort, it really seemed like an amazing opportunity for LA to get involved. I'm going to bring up Warren Dillard, who is the lead organizer of this event, and in bringing him up, just wanted to acknowledge, one of the key things that he mentioned to me almost a year ago is that in bringing this festival to Los Angeles, not only did he want to reach out to all communities throughout the city, but he was also very eager to set up opportunities for piano lessons and sort of, or more sort of lectures and seminars and performances as some of the finalists were getting ready for the competition. And what I thought was so great about that is what an opportunity for young people in my own district and Janice's district and others to really get a chance to hear and see and touch some of these world greats as they get ready to perform in one of the greatest piano contests in all around the world. So I know that he wanted to say a word, we wanted to have him reintroduce our dignitaries before they come up, but in fitting fashion, we make sure that all of our colleagues get a chance to speak first. So joining us here also is Council Member Janice Han.
Thank you very much, Councilman Ludlow, and I know Warren Dillard won't mind. Warren Dillard's family and his son Blake is here today, are longtime friends of my family's. We actually went to church together many years ago, so he won't mind if I speak first. This is very exciting to have the Rachmaninoff International Piano Competition to be held at our Disney Hall, as was said, this June, 4th through the 18th, and it'd be nice if Eric Garcetti could participate, but this festival, this competition is only open to pianists of any nationality, but they have to be between 18 and 27. So you just missed it. You just missed it. And it was, and was, was mentioned, those that are chosen to compete will receive round trip tickets to Los Angeles and the grand prize winner will win $30,000. And it's great to be here today with the Rachmaninoff International Piano Competition and Festival Committee and the Honorable Alexander Sokolov, the Minister of Culture and Mass Communication of the Russian Federation. And we're very pleased that you're here today to announce this great competition. This, for those of you don't know, the first Rachmaninoff competition in 2002 included 32 pianists ages 19 to 30 from Croatia, Australia, and the Ukraine. Over 10,000 people attended and this was established by Armin Turtevogian, a California resident and an Armenian native, and his idea was to bring the best of the world's pianists together with the best of LA culture. And as you said early in the reception, this people-to-people diplomacy is what is so important in this world, particularly as some of the many international events unfold daily. These are the kind of things that bring the world together and give an opportunity, as Martin said, for young pianists all over Los Angeles. And hopefully, I know I'm trying to provide buses to bring kids from my district to watch this competition because you never know, a child sitting in the audience watching this great competition may just spark their own personal dream to become a famous pianist. So congratulations to all. It's very exciting that I'll be here at our Disney Concert Hall and we're all looking forward to it.
And now if we can, let's welcome the organizer of the competition, Mr. Dillard.
Warren Dillard. Welcome.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm, thank you, I'm pleased to be here. I'm actually chair of the International Committee of this and I'm very honored to be a participant. As a pianist in my youth, I was inspired when a young man from Texas went to Moscow and won a competition called the Tchaikovsky International Competition. He returned to my hometown of Houston where, as a high schooler, I had the privilege of.
Seeing none. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, those are ordinances and carry over for second readings. If we have 12 members, we'll reconsider them today. Ms. Perry?
Sorry, I wanted to just ask for item one to move forth with, but they're carried over for a second reading, so do it then.
Well, we only have 10 members present at this time. If we have 12 members, we'll reconsider.
Reconsider, could I just say forthwith on two and one for Ms. Perry if they have a show?
Sure. Next items, please.
Item number three is also a public hearing item, and it is to appeal objections regarding building and safety report and confirmation of assessment in Council District Four.
And again, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. Public hearing is open and closed. Request to call this item special. Item number three, seeing...
Item number three, I want to continue it today.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there any objection? Seeing none, item three is continued. Next item, please.
Next item is item number four, and that's also a public hearing item.
And we do have a speaker card. Item four, let's call that special.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items five through nineteen.
Mr. Reyes.
Nineteen.
Nineteen? Okay, let's first acknowledge that five through nineteen have had public hearings in committee. A motion from the floor will be required to reopen the public hearings. Mr. Reyes calls item nineteen special. Other specials, Ms. Gruehl.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Any other specials on items five through nineteen? Seeing none on the balance of the items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Items five and six are ordinances and also carry over for a second reading. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items twenty through thirty-four. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, items twenty through thirty-four before the City Council today. Members, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Request for specials, Mr. Reyes.
Item thirty-two, please.
Thirty-two, called special by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Forthwith on item twenty, please. And I believe thirty-five and thirty-six are closed session matters. Madam Clerk, does that bring us back to items called special?
Yes, that would, and the first item called special was item number four, and that was called special for a card from the public.
Okay, before taking up items called special, let's come back to our presentation segment of today's meeting. Let me recognize Councilmember Labange to be accompanied by Councilmember Ludlow for a special presentation.
Mr. President, members, I'm joined by colleague Mr. Ludlow and Ms. Han here as we welcome a very special delegation of Eistri Vitsja from our great friends from the culture of the Federation of Russia. They're here to announce a very special program later on this year, and I would like to ask my colleague, Ms. Han, if you would, and Mr. Ludlow, to join me in the special welcome of the Minister of Culture, Alexander Sokolov, who is here with us right now, who's a beautiful man, whose ears are still ringing, because we went to the top of the Grand City Hall of Los Angeles, and we looked out at that beautiful Disney Hall up the street and rang the bell. We saw in the beautiful view of San Pedro as we look at the Alameda Corridor, and a train was coming up on time past Fifty-Fourth Street. But today, we are here today to officially welcome this delegation, which will have a series of programs at the Walt Disney Concert Hall in June. This competition for Rachmaninoff International Piano Competition and Festival will be held at the Red Cat Theater, and we know how special that is. There's a $30,000 grand prize for the two various, for the one who wins that competition, and I'm just pleased to be here to kind of usher this along. I only wish Mr. Garcetti was here with his piano, because I think we could enter you and you could help us with the city budget, because you know how to play those eighty-eights there, Eric, and my colleague, Mr. Garcetti, from Hollywood as well. But if I could ask Mr. Ludlow to say a few words, and then Ms. Han, as we welcome this special delegation by the Minister of Culture from the Russian Federation.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmen. First of all, let me say that this is going to be an exciting opportunity for the City of Los Angeles. Years ago, this idea of bringing together the best piano virtuosos in the world has now blossomed into one of the most amazing piano contests on the planet. As a young person that grew up in Oberlin, Ohio, at Oberlin College, the Conservatory of Music, when I first sat down with the organizers of this effort, it really seemed like an amazing opportunity for LA to get involved. I'm going to bring up Warren Dillard, who is the lead organizer of this event, and in bringing him up, just wanted to acknowledge, one of the key things that he mentioned to me almost a year ago is that in bringing this festival to Los Angeles, not only did he want to reach out to all communities throughout the city, but he was also very eager to set up opportunities for piano lessons and sort of, or more sort of lectures and seminars and performances as some of the finalists were getting ready for the competition. And what I thought was so great about that is what an opportunity for young people in my own district, in Janice's district, and others, to really get a chance to hear and see and touch some of these world greats as they get ready to perform in one of the greatest piano contests in all around the world. So I know that he wanted to say a word, we wanted to have him reintroduce our dignitaries before they come up, but in fitting fashion, we make sure that all of our colleagues get a chance to speak first. So joining us here also is Councilmember Janice Han.
Thank you very much, Councilman Ludlow, and I know Warren Dillard won't mind. Warren Dillard's family and his son Blake is here today, are longtime friends of my families. We actually went to church together many years ago, so he won't mind if I speak first. This is very exciting to have the Rachmaninoff International Piano Competition to be held at our Disney Hall, as was said, this June, fourth through the eighteenth, and it'd be nice if Eric Garcetti could participate, but this festival, this competition is only open to pianists of any nationality, but they have to be between eighteen and twenty-seven. So you just missed it, you just missed it. And it was, and was, was mentioned, those that are chosen to compete will receive round-trip tickets to Los Angeles, and the grand prize winner will win $30,000. And it's great to be here today with the Rachmaninoff International Piano Competition and Festival Committee and the Honorable Alexander Sokolov, the Minister of Culture and Mass Communication of the Russian Federation, and we're very pleased that you're here today to announce this great competition. For those of you who don't know, the first Rachmaninoff Competition in 2002 included thirty-two pianists, ages nineteen to thirty, from Croatia, Australia, and the Ukraine. Over 10,000 people attended, and this was established by Armin Turtevogian, a California resident and an Armenian native, and his idea was to bring the best of the world's pianists together with the best of LA culture. And as you said early in the reception, this people-to-people diplomacy is what is so important in this world, particularly as some of the many international events unfold daily. These are the kind of things that bring the world together and give an opportunity, as Martin said, for young pianists all over Los Angeles, and hopefully, I know, I'm trying to provide buses to bring kids from my district to watch this competition, because you never know, a child sitting in the audience watching this great competition may just spark their own personal dream to become a famous pianist. So congratulations to all. It's very exciting that I'll be here at our Disney Concert Hall, and we're all looking forward to it.
And now, if we can, let's welcome the organizer of the competition, Mr. Dillard.
Warren Dillard. Thank you, Councilman. I'm, thank you, I'm pleased to be here. I'm actually Chair of the International Committee of this, and I'm very honored to be a participant. As a pianist, in my youth, I was inspired when a young man from Texas went to Moscow and won a competition called the Tchaikovsky International Competition. He returned to my hometown of Houston, where as a high schooler, I had the privilege of seeing him in rehearsal for his return concert. I remember that day, I remember where I sat, and admitting my age, that was in 1958. Impressions are made on people in an amazing way. This competition brings thirty talented young people from all over the world. It's a great honor to be able to recognize them for their talents, to reward them for their hard work, and to help them in their ambitions to move on in music and become important in the world of music which bridges all generations and all cultures. Music is the common culture of the world, and we think that's an important thing in today's world. We're proud also to assemble ten distinguished jurists who come here from all over the world as well to judge this competition. We in fact have one of them with us, Mr. Nikita Juschanin. Nikita is with us, where is he? Oh, here he is. He's, he's one of the jurists who is here today from Tokyo with us today. We are also pleased to have several others I would like to acknowledge. We don't have time for everybody to speak, but I want to also introduce Mr. Viktor Luzun, who is the Council General of the Russian Federation, with us. Armin Turtevogian really organized this, it was his brainchild. Armin, please let us acknowledge your great contribution. And then I'm also very pleased to recognize, and we will have another introduction, of Mr. Evgeny Mikhailov, who won this competition three years ago. He arrived here last night from Russia. His story is a Cinderella story. He was from a small village by comparison in Russia. He came here as a young man with dreams and aspirations. He won first prize, which as you've heard is $30,000 cash, and a concert grand piano from Kawai Pianos. He had never had a piano in his own home, he always had to go down the street to practice. That accomplishment inspires me. We're delighted to have him back for this visit. And by the way, as comes out of these kinds of events, he goes on a world concert tour afterwards, he gets recording contracts. We launch careers in music, because this becomes a great badge of honor. We're thrilled to be here today, we solicit the city's support in every way that we can, and your acknowledgement of the value of this to our community is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you want to introduce? Absolutely, I get to introduce our special guest. Mr. Alexander Sokolov is the Minister of Culture and Mass Communication of the Russian Federation. This is a cabinet post in Russia that bridges not only music, all theater, museums, film, television, his umbrella is very large.
The chief's?
I'm sorry.
The chief's?
All, well, we'll go, we could go on all day, but he's also a charming archive. Oh, archives, that's right, archives. Thank you for the interpretation. But he is a charming man. He, by the way, is an accomplished musician in his own right, because he too was on the jury in our original competition, and we look forward to him returning in that capacity in June. So please join me in welcoming the Minister of Culture and Mass Communication of the Russian Federation, Mr. Alexander Sokolov.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It gives me a great pleasure to greet all of you, everybody, today on behalf of Russian Federation Government. It's my second visit to Los Angeles. Three years ago, while being a Director of Moscow Tchaikovsky Conservatory, I was invited to the first competition as a member of jury, and in a few months, I hope to come here again as a period of the second international Rachmaninoff Competition. Through the international language of music, and especially the masterpieces of the great Russian composer, whose home was here in Los Angeles until his death, we have the unique opportunity not only to celebrate and enjoy great music, but also to make much more intensive and fruitful the friendly relations and cultural exchanges between our countries. So I extend my best wishes for success to the organizers and participants of these major cultural events. Thank all of you for attention. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, very nice to hear it.
Minister, we would like to present this resolution on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, not only for the work that you're doing to spread the arts and music worldwide, but for this amazing career. We could be here for many, many hours, reading off the list of accomplishments that you have achieved, but it is our deep honor to have you here. We welcome you, and we wish much success on this next Rachmaninoff Piano Concert and Festival. Congratulations and welcome.
Before returning to the agenda, let me recognize Councilmember Garcetti.
Before Mr. Garcetti comes up here, we want to congratulate the last winner. Evgenia, you deserve a great seal of Los Angeles, and I got to, I got to confess to you, back there is a piano, and I wanted to bring it up to have you bang on it for us, but you wouldn't bang on it, you'd bring great music to this great chamber. But the next time you're in Los Angeles, we want you to visit, and we'll have this piano right here for you. And we thank you to be a champion, and what a wonderful program, all of you. It's so special. Music and arts make the world go round and bring peace to the world. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to note for everyone here in the audience that that handshake that Tom Labange just did probably damaged one of his hands here, so I, this festival, no, no, it was a great, great handshake, congratulations. Spasiba, spasiba.
Mr. Garcetti, for the introduction of a very special guest.
Please, a little gift from Moscow, an album about Moscow, which is now a city very beautiful, and I hope to welcome all of you in Moscow, and please, as an invitation.
Thank you, thank you. Good job, all of us. All right, good, thank you. We're going to go back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and colleagues. This is not a special presentation, this is just part of the normal agenda, our moment of inspiration. I know Ms. Han was one of the first, but if you look at your agenda today, we have with us Jules Boyele, who is the President of the Congolese Community of Southern California. You've seen him in these chambers before, he's a graduate of our CD-13 Leadership Institute, but is President of the Congolese Community here in Los Angeles, which is based in a city facility on Vermont just by LACC. He represents literally tens of thousands of Congolese refugees and immigrants that are here in Los Angeles. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to my friend Jules for a moment of inspiration to begin our meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Want to thank all the City Council members, and I want to salute your great job to the City of Los Angeles, helping people. We're fighting violence every day, poverty, and then when you go to different cities across the nation, New York, Cincinnati, you find the same thing, poverty. And when you go across the nation, you go to, across the ocean, in Africa, in South America, everywhere, we're still fighting violence, poverty, disease, genocide, crime, violence, and we need at least to find some kind of solutions. And I'm here today to join my hand with the City Council, so we can all try to see what's going on around the world. We're fighting violence here, if we don't stop it here, it will go to New York City. We're fighting violence in Africa, if we don't stop it over there, it will come in Los Angeles. So we need to sit down together as one mind, one heart, so we can face what's going on across the nation, across the world, because if we cannot stop what's going on today, our children will face with the same solution. So I'd like to commend you for what you're doing, there's so much we can do to bring better results to this world. So I'm here today to ask for your support and to keep asking you to work so hard so we can bring a better solution to what's going on to this world. I thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. May Jules' words inspire us in our meeting and throughout this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and Mr. Jules. And finally, before coming to our items called special, let me ask Mr. Reyes to introduce a very special guest gracing council chambers this morning. Mr. Reyes, for an introduction?
Yes. I'd like to take a moment to introduce Tom Lasorda, our liaison, the Dodger Organization, the great hero of Los Angeles. Welcome to City Hall. And just like to thank him for all his great work for our city, doing great renovations in Dodger Stadium as we speak, looking for a great season. Welcome, Mr. Lasorda.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you. I come here to visit all of you. In another day, we'll be heading for spring training to begin the, another season. We have the greatest fans in all of baseball right here in Los Angeles, and we owe them something. We owe them a championship team, and that's what we must give them. And we're going to go to spring training with that attitude. We want to see that pennant flag fly once again in Dodger Stadium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, for that introduction. Madam Clerk, I believe we have 12 members now. Can we go through and reconsider the ordinances?
Yes, Madam President, and that would be items one, two, and five and six.
Right, members, is there any question about the reconsideration? If not, then let's vote on reconsideration. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, those matters are now before us. The ordinances on the agenda as itemized by the clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, those are approved, and I believe items one and two, there was a request by the council members to send those forthwith, so that will be the order. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, item number four was called special for a card from the public.
All right, we do have a card submitted on item number four, Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. Please come forward at this time.
My name is Miss Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. I would say yes on item four, and yes on the increase for police officers and fireman's workers, on the half-cent increase on May the 17th, 2005, to be placed on our ballot measure. I do not believe that it should be held up because of one vote short. I believe that the public stand over the council members of their one mistake. I am very much against these computers that are inside of the City Hall of Los Angeles. We cannot see you guys vote, we got, know if you're really hitting the machine or not. I'm very much against your whole name not being printed out and say, Councilman Parks, Councilman Perry, but we do not know what district you guys are in. We do not see a seat for Councilman, our president-elect, Alex Panda. We are very much concerned about these computers being put out of the City Hall because of the danger zone.
All right, Ms. Hawkins, can you deal with this issue?
Okay, thank you. We need also to change, as I say, concerning if we vote in the City Hall, we would like to see each council member speak yes or no, not punch in yes or no. We are not sure if they have said yes or no, so we want them to speak through the microphone and say yes on police increase, or no on police increase, so that the public will be aware that each council had voted, and not one missed vote.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes, did you want to speak on this matter?
Thank you, Madam President and colleagues. I bring attention to this item. We're increasing the surcharge from three percent to six percent for the department's automated systems and development. It's important that we do this in that, right now, we have so many demands on the planning department, and every opportunity I get to raise this issue, I will, because we have issues from as basic as when a constituent wants an add-on to their home, when they do some kind of reparation to their residence, the process is going to take very, very long. I know cases have gone eight months to a year, to a year and a half, before permits are even returned or processed. Look at the backlog in one area of the department, and it's because they have basically been overwhelmed by the caseload. And zoning administration, that whole division right now is inundated with work, they don't have enough personnel. With the different issues coming from the area planning commissions, neighborhood councils, we don't have planners going to those meetings. If they do, there are planners that have been working all day and then go all night to these meetings. So the pressure on the planning department has been building up. We need to look at ways in which we can supplement their effort. I believe one of the strongest roles we hold as council members is when we have discretion and impact on the land use, how we affect those neighborhoods, how we affect that street, that home. And we do not have enough personnel to carry out that work to the level that it should be carried out. They are doing a heroic effort, but the fact is, the funding is out there for the personnel. We are going to begin losing personnel because the work is overwhelming, and we just need to understand where we're at with this department. So I take this opportunity to talk about the surcharge. We are going from three to six percent, but it's a much bigger issue, and I'm waiting for the day that I can have a joint hearing with Budget and Finance just to deal with those challenges with the planning department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Members, that matter is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved.
Next item, Madam President, item number nineteen was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
I believe we also have a card on that, so we must, let me call at this point for the public hearing Pam Schmidt. Is Pam Schmidt here?
Good morning, Council. My name is Pam Schmidt, I'm the directing attorney of Public Counsel's Child Care Law Project. Public Counsel represents low-income people in the, in Los Angeles County, and the Child Care Law Project represents low-income providers, childcare providers in low-income areas and nonprofit childcare centers. And today, we're just here to express our great support for the childcare policy that's before you. It's a great step for the City of Los Angeles in making the city a more child-friendly, childcare-friendly place, and including making the childcare of higher quality. I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone who in the city and in the community that's worked on the policy, and we're just here to strongly urge that it be adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reyes.
First, I just want to thank Councilmember Gruehl for her leadership in this. This is a grave concern to many of us who understand the pressures our residents are going through, when you have to decide where you're going to leave your child for childcare, be able to pay for it, and in some cases, people don't get employed, can't get employed because there's no one to take care of their children. So it's a very tough situation for many, many individuals, many families in our city. What this is attempting to do is put together a comprehensive approach in understanding how we can work as a friendlier city towards developing childcare, childcare opportunities. Some of the work that we're asking the planning department to do in conjunction with the other departments is start assessing where we can have different types of incentives within the entitlement process that essentially promotes childcare facilities along transit corridors, multipurpose, multi-use buildings. An example I gave is that one time, we were able to waive parking requirements, given that the neighborhood agreed with it, and in its place, instead of spending more money for childcare, we put the childcare facility within the spaces that that parking would have consumed. So we prioritize our care for our children over parking a vehicle. So we're looking at how we can be much more humane, much more friendly and opportunistic in trying to put together the types of strategies that shows to, shows our constituents that childcare is a very important issue, that we need to put everything behind that effort, and using every layer of this city government to promote the kind of environment that enhances childcare facilities. childcare facilities, childcare programs, training childcare providers, the whole spectrum of childcare services. And again, it's the hard work of Wendy Grue going back many years, and our work together as a family that we've been able to put together a comprehensive approach and hope to get some good policy language back to promote that type of support for our families in the city of L.A. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Councilmember Grue.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski, and thank you, Mr. Reyes. During the Plumb meeting, you were particularly articulate as well about the importance of childcare and the creation of quality, affordable childcare, which oftentimes conflict having quality and affordability at times, and we want to see that it is actually the case. What I'd like to do, if I could, just ask the representatives from children, youth, and families, as well as building and safety, who we have worked with, to have a seat, because I have just a couple of questions. Colleagues, you may recall that when I was first elected, I was surprised that the childcare policy that was developed in 1987 had never been updated since 1987, and a lot has changed. The challenges are still here, but there are, I think, even more challenges that are facing us. So one of the particular areas that the city of Los Angeles has influence, or I guess an ability to provide assistance is through building and safety and planning and zoning to create more childcare facilities in the city. So if I could just real quick ask if CCYF could talk about where the city of Los Angeles is involved in permitting childcare and family daycare centers, and then also to ask, and I think the answer is yes from David Laura of Building and Safety, but we'd like to have the city's childcare case management union actually help in streamlining that process and how we would be able to do that. So if I could just real briefly.
The city isn't responsible, has no responsibility for childcare, and in fact, we do have many responsibilities for childcare facilities and also on the other side to make sure that we support and fund quality childcare programs. So first, let me just say that the issue of childcare is very broad. The city does have many touchpoints for childcare that go beyond just building and safety and planning, but that is for us a necessary first step if we're going to expand and make sure that childcare is a welcome facility and service in our city. The city has responsibility under building and safety and planning to make sure that large family childcare homes, those are usually women who care for children in their homes, up to 14 children in their homes, and childcare centers, to go through a building and safety permit process if they're going to do anything that affects their facilities. And for many childcare centers, unless you're going into a building that was a childcare center before, you're going to have to renovate it because it will require smaller little toilets, it will require different kinds of access and building changes in order to make sure that it accommodates young children. So our building and safety department is very important to making sure that, number one, we make that process as easy and accessible as possible to primarily people who are not used to coming to City Hall, applying for their permits, and going through those processes. And I do have to say that building and safety has been very encouraging and supportive in trying to figure out ways to make sure that they can accommodate those processes.
Do you want to add anything, Madam? Yes, Councilmember, building and safety, first of all, we just want to add that the city has our full support with this program. What we've done is, we have implemented through our case, our existing case manager system, a specialty group or a specialty person to deal individually with these daycare centers. That person has been designated. We also have a referral system as well that where whether the daycare or the individuals who wish to start a business either come through the council offices, the mayor's office, or through the city's toll-free number, that person will be referred over to this designated individual, and in which case the, we'll pull together all the necessary resources, including planning department, the fire department, and any other agencies that need be involved to, to make sure that we put this type of project on the right track. In addition to that, we've made sure that all of our counterstaff has, has in fact been given all the fully updated information of the state law, the changes, current changes, and we have ongoing training for all of our staff just to make sure that they have all the correct information.
Great. Thank you, David, and I appreciate that. And colleagues, I know this is not, because I hear a lot of talking, a lot of sexy issue today, but it is for parents all over the city of Los Angeles who have to find childcare, and we have to be the catalyst. And that was the idea in 1987, that the city of Los Angeles not only could we, shh, Jenny? Just like, if people could listen for a minute, some of the staff that are talking, is the fact that we can serve as that catalyst, not only in the planning issues, but also in encouraging on the federal and state level the importance of funding for these programs, the importance of the fact that for us, you know, we believe that every dollar we spend saves $7 from less dependency on welfare programs, less dependency on the juvenile justice system. And so I think it's a huge investment that we're making, and this childcare policy sets the tone in which we can move forward in implementing a number of other programs. Probably many of our colleagues and others don't know, we operate childcare centers in the city of Los Angeles through recreation and parks. And I know that CCYF is doing actually a child, a budget in the city and how much we spend on children and how critical that is. And so today, colleagues, I'm asking for your support because it is about incentives, it is about providing funding, it is about sending the level of commitment that we have to providing childcare, quality, affordable childcare in the city of Los Angeles. And there are five areas that we're looking at: building capacity, creating affordability, raising accountability for quality, teaching and advocacy. And so, colleagues, I would ask you today that we adopt this policy that would be able to have us go on record that we care about the future of childcare and quality, affordable childcare in the city. So I want to thank our representatives and from public council as well, who have been very active. We had, I think, close to 100 people who participated in the development of this, and I want to thank the building and safety department and planning department and fire department ahead of time, because I know particularly that they will be of assistance and to both of you from CCYF who have been really leading the charge. So thank you very much, and thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Grue. Other members of the council wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 32 called special by Councilmember Reyes, and I believe there is a card that has been submitted on this item.
Mr. Reyes, on item 32, public hearing has been held in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing.
Thank you, Council President. On this particular item, colleagues, we had a situation where someone literally tried to burn down a very historic building in Lincoln Heights. It's a Sacred Heart Church, a church that was built at the turn of the century. Has great history, and unfortunately, someone chose to pour gasoline on the doorways or some kind of substance and light the doors on fire. And this reward speaks to our need to identify who would try to do and commit such a heinous crime. The community felt very violated. Unfortunately, because of some technical misunderstanding of how this should be reported, the necessary staff from the fire department did not show up for a couple of days, which added more grief, added a sense of abandonment by the parishioners of Sacred Heart. But I just want to thank Chief Amatri, want to thank Captain Fiero, and the other personnel who did show up at a press conference to announce the reward that would identify the people who would want, who committed this crime. The city family has regrouped. We're doing everything in our power to make sure we capture the folks that have committed this crime. And again, I want to thank our, our city personnel for stepping up, my staff for working hard on this item, and to making sure we can bring back confidence for the folks who felt abandoned during that heinous situation. So again, thank you, Chief Amatri, Captain Fiero, and all the personnel who's working on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members of the council wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please.
Sorry, could we ask item 19 to go fourth with as well, please?
Item 19, fourth with as well. Next item?
Mr. President, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Wednesday, February 16th, leave at 11:15. A motion is required, and that's for city business.
Ms. Hahn moves. That excuse is granted.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Okay. Madam Clerk, have we sent items one and two fourth with?
Yes, Mr. President, they were.
Okay. And if there's nothing further than in conformance with California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Sergeants, please clear the chambers. Welcome back. We have two items that we took up in closed session. Madam Clerk?
First item before council is item number 36, and that's approval of, or authorizing the city attorney to expend $120,000 in outside counsel for the case Carbon versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay. Let's open the roll on that item. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Second item?
Yes, item number 36, and that was approval of appointment of Jerry Miller as interim chief legislative analyst, and I believe there is an additional motion for the salary.
Okay.
And that was for 15%.
Okay. With the motion, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That appointment is approved, as well as the salary increase.
And that clears the desk.
All right. We have any items for posting referral? Or we've done that?
Those have already been taken care of.
Okay. Announcements, colleagues? Any announcements? Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to take the opportunity to remind the public, specifically in the Van Nuys area, at today at the Wendy's at 1764 Sherman Way, Van Nuys. The Wendy's is going to dedicate all of their sales of today, 100% of their sales today, to the William Holland Middle School, which is located at 17120 Van Nuys Street in Van Nuys in my district. And they've officially adopted the school, and today all of their sales, all their hamburgers, fries, whatever they sell today, they're going to go ahead and donate to the school, and they also are collecting donations for anybody who would like to donate as well. So I just wanted to make that announcement that today, Tuesday, the 15th, the day after Valentine's Day, go out and get a Wendy's hamburger, or a shake, or whatever it is you like, and know that every penny is going to go to the Mulholland Middle School, which is the school that the Wendy's has adopted. So I'd like to thank them for offering that to the community and coming through for the kids at Mulholland Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements, colleagues? One quick announcement tonight, the Los Angeles Public Library will be hosting its allowed series, The Zocalo, which will be a conversation with the new editorial page editor, Andres Martinez, of the Los Angeles Times, 7 o'clock tonight. Adjouring motions, if I can ask everybody, please arise. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I ask that we, the whole council adjourn in memory of Patricia Bishop Carey, mother of our former city clerk, Michael Carey. She passed away on Sunday, February 13th, just a few days ago. She was the mother of Mike Carey, our city clerk, who retired in October 2004. She was born in Whittier, California, in 1923, and raised in Wilmington, where she attended Banning High School prior to going to UCLA. Her father was Edwin Bishop, and Edwin Bishop worked for the city for 32 years in the Bureau of Engineering. She was married to Lloyd C. Carey, who worked for the Department of Water and Power for 29 years. So clearly, he's a family dedicated to public service in the city of Los Angeles above all else. She was, she raised Mike Carey in Wilmington in La Cremona, and she is survived by Mike and her granddaughter, Tricia Carey, who works in the chief legislative analyst's office, as we, all members adjourn in her memory.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. And I'll be all members. Are there adjouring motions, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all this meeting. The city council is adjourned.